Follow the January twenty eighth Central County Council Committee meeting order. Special meeting order, thank you. Today, we're going to vote on the recommendation of the Rules Committee on Counsel and Attorney. The Rules Committee looked at several applications and chose Mr. Clint Zales. Mr. Zales has, he chose him based on qualifications, his business litigation experience, his experience working with government agencies. And we tried to make it a nonpartisan appointment. For those interested, Mr. Zales's last primary vote was in two thousand and sixteen and he voted Republican. Mr. Zales, would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Zales, law firm that I own in town is Lee and Zales. I have off of thirtieth street, I've been doing municipal work since two thousand and three, started under Tony Zapia's administration as county attorney, various special projects with the jail sheriff's department, various HR issues over the years, worked with the commissioners this past year, the election board. So I have familiarity of various departments here in St. Joseph County, haven't worked with you folks yet. Hoping this is going to be a good match, that you enjoy level of legal representation that I bring to the table. It's pretty much no nonsense, I'll tell you what the law is, what it means, what it may be, the impact on what you're deciding. My approach is to be prepared, come to meetings. If you ask me to do something for you, if I have questions, I'd like to collaborate, make sure that we're all on the same page and that assignments are done at a time and manner. So my general approach and reputation in the court system here, if you ask any of the judicial officers here in St. Joseph County, Elkar County, before County, Lake County where I practice, I'm sure that most of them will say that that's generally how I show up in court, just prepared and ready to go. Any questions for me?
I have a question. Why would you want to be the attorney for the county council?
I've always enjoyed municipal work, I've always enjoyed what I've learned from it and I've always enjoyed the sense of satisfaction of serving my community, I'm a lifelong resident here in St. Joseph County. My father was a nineteen sixty eight graduate of St. Joseph High School, all of my fruits are here. Came from a blue collar background and put myself through Princeton University, developed raised a law school. I feel as if life has been good to me and I try to recognize that I came from more humble beginnings. I like to give back in form of community service. I've engaged in things such as rebuilding together over the years, I've volunteered my time with the Bar Foundation, various other community organizations. It's the type of thing that when you're walking in the door, you think geez, why did I sign up for this? But then when you're walking out the door, you realize the good that you're doing and you feel the reward of serving your community. So I look at this as another opportunity for personal satisfaction for those reasons, but also to bring something to St. Joseph.
Yes, Senator, for our area, and I think you probably are aware of this. Working with the council, you work with both Republican and Democrat, that's maybe one day in the business, who knows? But your, as our legal counsel, you just need to make sure that you're, you are nonpartisan. How you approach working with all of us, that's important to all of us, I think. That you give everybody equal amount of time, so to say, or equal amount of representation. And quite often salary isn't as great as what it may look like on paper, it might not look that great. But generally speaking, you're interacting with all nine of us and especially on a day to day basis, you're probably interacting with our admin system. Jennifer, I'm just hoping that your schedule will allow for that. You'll be accessible for everybody.
Absolutely, I will have my cell phone number, I'm an early riser, I get up four o'clock every morning, try to be in the office at six thirty. I'm out by five, I understand we've got some additional commitments here after our certain days of months. But if you want to call me at seven in the morning to talk shop, I'm more than willing to do that five days a week, that's just my general program on how I operate my business and my day to day routine.
I have a question for the Rules Committee, are we going to see his bills? Are we going to what? See his bills, vote on his bills, like we've been doing that.
He's not going to vote us, he's not going to bill us like Mr. O'Brien did, he's going to take the salary. He's not going to give us an extra bill.
So it's just a salary, no other?
That's correct.
That would say unless he did work for somebody else, right?
Totally.
That's correct, for some reason, county attorney.
I have active litigation with St. Joseph County now, various departments discrimination cases, federal, state that I functioned in, I think three or four of them acted on. Which departments? Health Department, that one may have passed the ninety day filing period once the EOC gave this write to suit letter. I have the Donna Hurley matter, which is discrimination case. I've also been counsel on the Duke and Center matter and Sharon McBride. And I also have Onecky, which is a slip and fall at the St. Joseph County Jail by, I believe, an officer. About a little slip and fell on ice, pledging promises liability. Those are the active pieces of litigation.
Are you representing the departments in county government or individuals?
I've always been retained as kind of outside special counsel. I tell people I've handled things that have been sticky wickets, that there's been political issues or conflict of interest, that they've wanted somebody to appear that had a more neutral face with political sides, so they've called our office for that representation.
For us. For the county?
Yes.
Bob Lee. Jim Groves, up in the S U, obviously you practice with them?
Yes, practiced with Jim since two thousand and two, we went our separate ways, I believe, two thousand and one. Bob's name is still on the building and the sign, he's not affiliated with the practice whatsoever, he just.
But you guys practice together?
I see him on a daily basis, Bob doesn't have an act of license to practice. Yes, absolutely.
Well, I got a conflict of interest, not against you, but I know Bob very well. And I knew Jim not real well, but did some family work for us. And I think it's a conflict for me, I might have a little bit of bitter taste in my mouth, so. Hey, when Bob did some work for my family, so did Jim, I mean, how does that make me impartial when he's associated with Bob and Jim?
Are you asking to abstain from the vote?
I might, I might, but I wish I'd have been told ahead of time. The people you interviewed, it'd been nice to know, because I think, you know, we've given that common courtesy in return. What Jennifer decided to stay, we gave that courtesy to have the whole council talk and interview the other secretary, what about the attorneys? I mean, we only had one person here, now you want us to vote on?
Mr. O'Brien was presented to the entire council without any options. They were not to the Republicans, but to the entire.
I'll give you that, what about a sec, what about a secretary though? Mr. Zales is not a secretary, he's an attorney. Oh, I know that, I know that.
Responsibilities in our official capacity as a council member that is completely independent and separate from our personal lives.
That's easy, that's easy to say.
It's easy to say, but it's also.
You can say that, you're still preconceived notions about people.
Also the advisement that we were provided by Mr. O'Brien with, as it related to the makeup of county government and the advisement that we were getting from the county.
So if, if he has a conflict of interest, can we then vote to allow him to abstain?
From this.
Some of his vote, sure, I mean, I would make a motion to allow that.
Say that again, what'd you say? I'm sorry, something.
Council member who wanted to abstain from the vote, abstained by the majority.
Not majority unanimous.
Yeah, unanimous.
Mr. Thomas, are you asking to abstain?
I don't know, I feel like I'm being rushed, things are awful for both. So I think I will abstain then.
Thomas is asking to abstain. I, I'd like to make a motion that, that you can abstain from the vote.
A second motion.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Anyway, Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry, we do not have unanimity, most of them.
Is this considered the discussion on the item or are we asking? I'm making a general comment. I'd just say when, when we're, when we're picking this lawyer, it's a lot about coming together and this decision was made entirely by this new coalition of common cause with no other consideration by the other members. So we were not allowed to see what the other attorneys brought to the table, we weren't allowed to thank anyone else. We're talking about this new collaborative situation, it would be nice if the other members were included in some of the. But we're not members of the Coalition of Common Cause, you are, so you have representatives and we don't.
I harken.
St. Joseph County Council.
I harken back to two years ago when none of us were given an opportunity, other new council leader that just hoisted upon us and here's our new council, somebody's to figure it out. Do a great job.
I want my cake and eat it too.
I think the situation is, there's been a lot of comments in the press that you want to work collaboratively, but none of, none of the other members outside of the Coalition.
It is a function of our council rules that the Rules Committee faces a confrontation. That's what the Rules Committee is done.
But in the past, it was divided between Republicans and Democrats, now there's a coalition of common cause and the rest of the members. So the same presentation, and before, if you recall, our last Rules Committee members that represented the Democratic faction and the Republican factions, so we had representatives in both areas. Now we only have.
We have representation.
But that's something you guys have announced to the press, that you are a coalition. So it's, it's a different set of now than it used to be.
But it's a coalition for the leadership team, a Republican and two Democrats.
But, but you have a separate agenda than the rest of the members.
Our list is a Republican.
Well, then it would be nice to be included in the decision making.
I think we're all. Together, probably easily the.
Maybe you can reach out a little bit, it would have been nice to have a chance to look at someone the other.
We have, we have three people applying, you know, people down here will be thought to the best. We need unanimous, you know, on the vote with, to get the Mr. Zales, and the very candidate that you heard of him.
He reminds multiple by, it needs twenty four hours notice once a decision has been made, unlike two years ago when he showed up and came to vote. There was time to determine if this is a qualified individual to represent us as a council or to determine that he's not qualified to represent us as a council attorney. That wasn't even close to accorded two years ago. So in that mindset, and for the sake of time, because we do have other proceedings that were mandated to go through tonight, I'm going to make a motion to approve the recommendations to the Rules Committee for Clint Zales to serve in the council.
I'll address that. Mr. President, I'd like to have a motion, point of order, to supersede that. I was, I was looking at the Rules Committee, Rules for the procedure and unanimous vote is not needed, it's only a majority vote of the council. You did take a formal vote, but leave, if that interpretation is correct, that Mr. Thomas's request to abstain was approved.
No, I.
And I, I can read it, I can read it if that would be.
I may have come to the conclusion there and I appreciate you calling me out on it.
I thought it would require a report.
It's a suspension of the rule, that is, it's not a request of.
Suspension of the rule would be different, different research.
Alright, so Mr. Thomas, I guess. We have a motion, we have a second. Motion and a second, very good. All those in favor of Mr. Zales being our attorney at the St. Joseph County Council, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. One more. Alright. You now working?
Yes, yes.
Awesome.
Right. Test on the first day.
According to section eight, the standing committees are, chairs of standing committees are not appointed. So what we discovered here is the last two years, we did not do this right. Chairs of standing committees are to be nominated by the committee and voted on by the committee. And so that's the way you're going to do it.
I have a question though.
And reviews since you, I think you too, I'm sorry.
So how you guys vote, four years ago, three years ago, you've been mad and voted on?
I don't recall, I don't recall that.
I never heard of it though. And this is on my third year. Right on my third. It's in the rules, it's something you got overlooked. That's probably a good reason why, it's good for us to look at the rules and make sure that we're what we want them to be. So I think it's part of one of our goals to try and get the rules with that and we want make sure we, there are some of those written nineteen seventies and nothing wrong with the seventies, but not sure that we'll even update it since then.
Alright. So given that, I need a nomination from the people that are on the Engineering and Transportation Committee for Chair.
Like you're nominating Mr. Chabaz as Chair of the Engineering and Transportation Committee?
Have a second.
Diana, you cannot, you're not.
As to the, so Brian, Amy, or Andy, I will second the nomination. They're saying aye.
Is it open for other nominations?
You're right, I apologize, we can't open up nominations, I have another nominee. I second. Have you other committee? Yeah. There are second.
I guess I'll second myself.
Alright. Alright, then we will do a show of hands vote, all those in favor of Jennifer Chabaz, raise your hands please. Diana, Diana, you're not. Those in favor of Andy Ruck, raise your hands please. Jennifer, congratulations, you are the Chair of the Engineering and Transportation Committee. Budget Administration Committee, Mr. Tanner, myself, Mr. Panzerite, Mr. Big, Mr. Simmons. I've been nominated, Brian, Tanner, who, Budget Administration. So nomination. Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate, am I on that committee? Randy thing.
There are second. Alright, all those in favor of Mr. Tanner, raise your hand please. All those in favor of Mr. Big, raise your hand please. Congratulations, you're the Chair of the Budget and Administration. Land Use Planning Committee, Mr. Panzerite, myself, Miss Drake, and Mr. Zales. Chair of the committee. Second nomination, are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Amy Drake.
All those in favor of Mr. Panzerite, raise your hands please. Those in favor of Miss Drake, raise your hands please, Mr. Panzerite, congratulations, you're the Chair Human Services Criminal Justice Committee, Ms. Hess, Mr. Schatzel, Ms. Chabaz, Mr. Big, and Mr. Thomas.
Second.
I'd like to nominate Diana Guss.
I would second the nomination. All those in favor of Mr. Thomas, raise your hand please. All those in favor of Miss Hess, raise your hands please. Miss Hess, congratulations, you're the Chair of the Services Criminal Justice Committee. Alright, we are, that is our last, our last big business, most popular journalists. Again, second, we are a term. Let's take a five minute break and then we'll go with it, our next meeting.
We don't, we don't have a bigger room.
Yeah.
I'm.
From the auditor's office had a meeting with Lau in regards to that whole process of a contract. So we will be coming up with something here in the future.
Thank you.
If I may, what what's the rough percentage increase that this represents? Is it like forty percent increase, hundred percent increase?
Three hundred and three thousand to three hundred and forty seven thousand.
Okay, so roughly five percent increase year over year. Unfortunate, but.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the pitcher? I seek a motion from the.
More consent.
All in favor, signal progress, saying aye.
All right.
Be opposed. Uh, bill number two dash twenty five A. Full counsel with a favorable.
Thank you. Uh, we now go back to or go to engineering and transportation. Uh, to you, Mr. Our sorry, to Mr. Shabazz.
Um, bill number two dash twenty five B. Um, appropriate ninety one thousand nine hundred and twenty thousand. Um, department, um, oh, oh, we do, um, surveyor. Your leader.
Your leader's surveyor offices on the south corner of the seventh floor. Uh, John Law, I brought him along as started last year under former efficiency about, um, work being done on gas ditch, which is something and district, and I think it's a mission in your district. So it's a grant, um, that the John put in for that they got the DNR gonna pay most of this. Um, we're gonna pay twenty percent. And that comes out of the gas ditch fund that people live along that. And so yeah, I can fill you in on the rest of that. It started with them and Bobby.
Um, actually started before Bobby, it started in two thousand two. Um, played for the DNR grant, hundred thousand dollars. The base big gas ditch to widen it, turn it, make it into a two-stage ditch, which is, believe it or not, new technology ditching. Um, so finally got that done. That's the finished up. And they sent us the invoice. We paid them. Um, my thing was what one hundred fifty five or something like that, one point. It was originally one fifty five, but we didn't do some of the work because we ran into a couple monitoring wells. So we had to take her up on, uh, county park property. Um, yeah, so anyway, thirteen thirteen hundred, sixteen hundred feet of new new ditch installed. And, um, I guess DNR sent in the check to the county and we're just asking for it to be released.
Um, yeah, I'd like to ask, go ahead. Mr. What when did that start? I'm sorry, when you say that?
It started in two thousand two.
Two, okay.
There were a couple reasons why it took so long. Normally it doesn't go that long, but DNR has a three-year time span and we worked with them to get it done. Right there, their time.
Correct. Um, this is that pitch, is that empty into?
No, the gas ditch. Um, drains the entire, well, drains the northeast part of the county goes down and then meets up with Cobus Creek. Um, there at Act Road, it's South County Road. Eight or one away there in Alcarson Creek County Park. They meet right before they go in and they turn into Colas Creek and then go down into the, you know, the conservation clothing.
Okay. This is this project going to increase the flow rate of the gas ditch?
No, um, what it does is basically take a ditch that had straight up and down banks.
Yeah.
Back them off, um, hundred and twenty feet from forty feet to hundred and twenty feet. And basically it it adds floodplain. So it reattaches the floodplain to the ditch. So when the ditch comes up, it's got room to spread out.
So it's just gonna increase its its holding retention capacity.
It shouldn't speed any water up, it should just hold it in that area until, you know, time it drains down.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Motion just into the council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Second. Oh, in favor, if I was saying aye. Post. So to number two dash twenty five B goes to the council with a favorable.
Thank you.
So we're going to give the services of the Justice Committee, assess.
Name of first bill under consideration, bill number two dash twenty five C. Appropriation of fifty two thousand five hundred, given department zero 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 nine, emergency management. Versus online.
Good, uh, good evening, council members. My name is, can you hear me? Yep, okay, my name is Al Curse, it's, uh, I'm the Saint Joseph County Emergency Management Agency Director with offices at one twenty five South Lafayette Street, directly across the street. Uh, where the door is always open and you're always welcome to come in. What we have before here is the creation of fund account eighty nine fifty eight. Uh, this is going to be for the funds that are going to pay for our federal signal informer radios. Think of high-tech weather alert radios, about a thousand dollars apiece. Include some, uh, uh, other hardware computer with them. Uh, we were able to get this grant a while ago at the last minute. I've talked to the council before about this, but this formally creates it. Uh, within the auditor's office. And the way it works with these grants, we have to pay for the equipment first and then the state reimburses us. Uh, we're good with the grant, the state's just waiting on it for us to pay federal signal. The equipment has been received by our vendor, uh, the sirens or the radios have been programmed to the same frequencies that our sirens are going to use. And, uh, we're really excited about this, so these will be able to go into high-risk locations. Uh, where we have a big captured population or maybe some areas, uh, I know we have one school that's outside our siren network. And, uh, we'll be looking to council members if you have recommendations where they should go. So, uh, we're pretty excited about this, we think this will work with our, uh, uh, outdoor early warning siren system, and it was a lot better than just buying a whole bunch of the cheap Midland weather alert radios and giving those away. These are something that can tie into our, uh, significant alert system we have now. And this came from a, what they call an HSSP grant. It's a state homeland security program grant, very specific, uh, what you can get hardware and stuff like that. But we were well within the parameters of, uh, uh, what we got. And we consider this drop-down funding. This is money that comes from Department of Homeland Security slash FEMA to Indiana Department of Homeland Security. And then if our grant is selected, it drops down to us. That's about it.
Al, could you give us a situation? Um, give us a situation in which these radios would be used and kind of tell us how they would be used.
Yes, uh, we, uh, I would, I I like to think of Madison, little Madison Township, grade school way down south there by itself. I certainly think this radio should be there. I should think it should be in the command and control center at the Penn campus. Uh, quite possibly with some of the new, uh, factories, the, I think the battery plant were and, uh, apologize for not knowing the exact employment letter levels, maybe twelve hundred people, maybe more. Uh, at their command and control center there, they should have one there and other areas, uh, may maybe nursing home, I think schools and, uh, along those lines, what we have, what we call a vulnerable at-risk population. Now again, our early outdoor warning siren systems are to be heard outside, sometimes you can't hear hear them inside. This would alert inside and coordinate with the outdoor sirens. And I would just ask for your favorable approval of this.
Okay, fair. Yeah.
That is a good. Second. Mission, thank you. Next, uh, bill number two twenty five B. Corporation plus thirty eight thousand one hundred and eighty seven dollars nineteen cents. Department zero zero five five health. Renata Williams, Director, carrying help department, second floor law building. We are looking to spin down funds from a NHL grant that has expired twenty twenty three, but still has funds available to purchase additional, uh, Narcan public access boxes throughout the community to hold Narcan. Um, education materials to for the community to reduce stigma and educate the community regarding, um, overdose for the health promotion specialist that's working in this. Thank you. Any questions?
I'm not a committee member. But not as, is that Narcan available to your public safety agencies? Or someone who are for the public?
So it's both. So yes, she also provides trainings for a lot of organization that wants to have the Narcan, but may not have the public access box. And then also other, um, organizations throughout.
Thank you. I know the the Nalox boxes, am I saying that right? Alex.
Naloxone, Narcan, yeah.
Um, the boxes have more in them than just the Narcan, correct?
So the, it is a dose of Narcan and then instructions on how to use it and to make sure that you call nine one one. So everything in the box is pertaining to the overdose and how to use the Narcan.
Okay, and where would these new boxes go?
So, um, the health promotion specialist, she just started actually in August, but she has done a good job networking within the community. She's been receiving data from our state database, some of the nine one one, um, off officers. And to be able to figure out where the overdose are have to are happening to make sure that we're putting boxes in those areas. And she's reaching out to the community, even if they don't want to have a box, just to make sure that they know we have the supply and the training available to them because it is happening and they may not know about it in their area.
Then two years, I think it was, uh, about a year and a half ago, we approved, uh, a grant for Narcan boxes, do we have any kind of, we gotten any kind of data back on, you know, lives that have been saved or use of the Narcan? Do we have any information back on that?
So that would predate me, but I can get that to you. But I can tell you since, um, I've had this in my unit, the doses distributed was two thousand one hundred and sixty one. And then we put up two twenty one boxes already and thirteen trains. And again, this is just since, most of it is just since August because we had no one really in a position. We had someone trying to fill in the best that they could with their other duties. So this year, now that we have someone dedicated to, uh, not the health substance abuse amongst other health promotions. We hope to ramp that up. But we, I do have that, and I'm not sure, this is my first time being here, what your name is, but I do have the data preliminary from the corner from the suicide and overdoses and they are down, we're actually putting that together now.
If we just send that to Jen and that she could disseminate that for the entire council.
Thank you.
A motion. Which would be favorable, second.
Review, branch twenty five, salary amendment.
Uh, Brianna McCall, Assistant Director of Environmental Health, ninth floor, county city building. Um, so essentially what we are asking for is to use some of the funds or some of the money available in the county health fund to acknowledge two of our staff members who do supervisory work. Um, currently they're just listed as environmental health specialists with their fellow environmental specialists, but they are delegating tasks, they're supervising, they're checking their work, they're training staff. Um, the complicated cases are theirs, they take in initiatives and programs and do all of that fun stuff. So to acknowledge the additional roles that they have to their fellow EHS, we just wanted to, um, have a slight increase in pay that I believe is about twenty two hundred per, um, per EHS per year.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a question. Um, we just did our budget where we're doing this again.
I think there was just a delay in getting all of it passed through. Um, there was some turnover throughout the year and so between having a new health officer come in, uh, it just, it took a little bit longer. So I do apologize for that because it was our intention to have it done before the year ended.
It's hard for me to vote for this because we do budgeting, the first meeting in January, nothing against you of course. But I I have a really hard time, we start operating more, it was budget neutral.
Yeah.
I I want the way, I just have a hard time.
Sure.
I am a great, Mr. Fig, I think once we've set a budget, it's really important that the department stick to that budget. And as he said, it is January, we just hit this budget cycle, so. Um, I would encourage the health department to be, uh, next budget cycle, be ready for all these changes to present them to us in the budget cycle. Maybe I appreciate you. So Brianna, if you could explain, so I'm looking at the notes on this. So it said on November twentieth, twenty twenty four, the board called approve the creation of two new positions, are all these two new positions or are we titled positions? So the Board of Health recommended this, I mean, I, I'm, was that unanimous vote?
Um, Mike, we're the director of operations, so what we've done is the bulk of budget for the positions, it has already been budgeted for. What we're, what we're asking for is just the increase in the extra supervisory, so they provide. These are folks, they've been doing the duties for quite some. Um, again, I apologize, I'm with Brianna on this, I apologize for the lateness of the request. Do we are able to absorb the cost of this? These folks do are, they are providing a valuable service in interacting directly with the public, addressing some of their concerns where so they're where the, I hesitate to say lower level because I don't believe the folks in the department are at lower level, but they're, as they're getting these issues kicked up to them, they're using their expertise, they have additional expertise. Here's a service doing the all, where they're providing the public a needed service and getting them the answers promptly that they're looking for. Um, as well as supervising work and directing the work. They tend to take on the tougher cases and handle them themselves, so then those situations are resolved in a more timely fashion and than if they were with one of the EHSs that had maybe slightly less experience or maybe didn't have the expertise in a specific area.
Well, you're saying this and I'm looking at the documentation, is it budget neutral then? Cause you're, you're, you're decreasing your environmental health specialist by the amount you want to increase environmental health special coordinator.
Yes, we have two positions that actually did not go fill. And so we we have not filled them at this point, we are not planning on filling them. So in this, in this regard, this would be budget neutral. When the money is coming from an unfilled position, right, to increase the pay of a position where this person has taken on new responsibilities.
Right. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, just say budget.
Yes, I apologize, I apologize.
Is the unfilled position still posted, is it? So it's not.
There are no plans to post it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you. Bill number twenty five salary amendment, department zero zero five five, helping them. Two hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars of bridge.
Brett Davis, Vector Coordinator, St. Joe County Health Department, uh, offices on the ninth floor, Kansas City Building, as well as the third floor of the law building. Uh, this, uh, bill in front of you is, um, to use up money in a legacy fund. This is money coming out of the Health Department trust funds, funds that are no longer being maintained by the Department of Health as, um, a result of help first Indiana. So these are positions that are already, this work has already been budgeted through HFI. And, um, to fund our vector program, this, uh, bill is to end up using up those legacy funds that are no longer being maintained rather than spending them out of the HFI budget.
And Mike, we're looking at the Department of, I should note that this is would be tied directly with the following, uh, five dash twenty five and two twenty five G. Um, there are two accounts that, uh, we are funding vector from, uh, it would be. For the other, every appropriation as well.
HFI funds, uh, that's what all this is about?
Uh, these are, uh, HFI was funded at the same time as the budget through the last cycle. And so by using these funds, we are not having to spend out of the HFI pot of money.
What's for twenty twenty?
Play with that money. Free up money.
I I can't speak to the broader Department of Health, uh, usage of the two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Um, my understanding is that that just goes unspent and it was remained in the coffers for future years in the event that future funding is not as substantive as it has been there.
That, you know, that's what I talked to, uh, Dr. Meg Lory about, you know, that exhausting the funds just to exhaust them. And it's coming from the state, is there any way, because these funds may not always be there twenty six, so forth. Have you guys considered that?
Yes, uh.
You don't, you're not required by law to spend it, are you?
No, these two, these two accounts are just accounts that have been sitting around, um, like I said, legacy accounts. Um, as far as the vector program goes, I have taken measures to, uh, try and safeguard the program against potential, uh, budget cuts in the future. Hopefully not, you know? But, um, yes, there has been some some planning in that that other.
And I think I think we all got this right.
Yes.
Any questions?
So basically what we this, I mean, yeah. Uh, basically what we're doing here is, I'm trying to understand the front here, are we increasing the pay of the vector coordinator and the vector environmental health specialist? That's what we're doing?
No, no, no.
Okay, explain this to me, because I'm not, it's not, it's not really.
Those, those increases were already factored in to the existing pot of money that these positions are being paid out of currently through the HFI.
Factored in by whom and when?
This was part of the twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty five budget.
Budget neutral to the twenty twenty five budget.
It was part of the budget.
Yes.
Okay, that, that helps, thank you.
Why are we doing a salary amendment then?
Uh, the the salary amendment is to move it from group, certainly page over to, uh, Zach. So we're moving it from, I'm sorry, from the Health Trust Fund. Services. Yes.
I can't speak to the intricacies of why certain things are labeled certain ways and look at books and not that sort of thing. Um, but I can say that the vector program was funded out of these two accounts last year. And so, um, like I said, the, the salaries as listed as proposed are what were approved for the twenty twenty five budget.
That makes sense, so the last time these pays were made out of a different fund, they were at a lower level and now we need to approve them in this fund at this higher level.
That sounds like clear way we're trying to say.
About this, but can I put narration to some of my subject thing? Um, I want to know it, I I'm not making a joke.
Yeah, uh, with a, with proper permitting, yes, uh, adding, adding, uh, aeration to an existing system is. Yeah, with a, with proper permitting, yes. Adding, adding a narration to an existing system is something that is allowed.
We can do it now, St. Joe.
We've, adding an narration system to a septic system has been allowed for years as long as people properly apply for it. There's different technologies, certain ones become available and go away. The narration system that had been the dominant one in our area went defunct in twenty twenty and there's a newer style that's been, that's now coming around.
You better, you better assign an EHS coordinator for that frontier.
Yeah, certainly.
So we still, still dealing with state and Lyme disease. We did last of last season.
We have more Lyme disease in St. Joe County than the entire southern third of Indiana. And that's not hyperbole, that is numbers that I verified.
That's what the focus of some of this.
Uh, yes, part of my job as vector coordinator is to try and get my hands wrapped around our tick-borne disease problem. We have Lyme disease, we have a special strain of Helicia, there's a plaremia outbreak in Elka County. The first locally acquired case of babesiosis was in St. Joe County. We are the only county in Indiana to have multiple cases of babesiosis now, which is lovely. These are, there's a myriad of different tick-borne diseases. It's like Lyme disease, except for you can get both it and Lyme disease from the same bite of the tick. So you feel like symptoms and feel like symptoms and it's left forever and terrible.
It sounds pretty sure.
Yeah.
Babesiosis.
Yeah. Also on the lookout for the lone start tick, the lone start tick can give you an alpha-gal allergy. I don't know if you're aware of that, but that is the allergy to red meat. So they have been found in adjoining counties and I'm trying to keep an eye on that because don't want anybody here to become allergic to steak, don't want to find a cheeseburger to go to the hospital because that's again, not hyperbole, that is. Part of my job is trying to figure all that out because, oh lord, we have a problem.
You seen your interventions bring numbers down at all?
Absolutely. So we had a late start. I have, I have numbers for the mosquito side of thing. The tick numbers were right down. Tick collection, I hit a quota on my tick collections every March and so. There's not really good interventions on tick, a lot of public education and that sort of thing. But as far as mosquitoes go, having started the program in earnest in May, over last year, we had a thirty-seven point six four percent reduction in mosquitoes countywide. And in a certain area that we did a pilot program on catch basins, we had a seventy-three point five three percent reduction in total mosquitoes in that area.
With use of larvicide?
Yes, with, with, which is used in larvicide to reduce overall numbers. That way we, we did have about a thirty-three percent reduction in West Nile virus positives, which meant less spraying as well.
Any questions I might ask? How are you applying that? I mean, you're getting it, you said we're the worst. What was the stat you said?
For which one?
Well, I'm sorry for the, uh, tick, was it tick or the?
Those that were there were in regards to mosquitoes.
Mosquitoes. How are you spraying that? I mean, how is that, when you, I mean, just randomly going on spray or I mean?
No, I, I've got a whole, a whole process here. The pilot area where we had the large reduction, those were treating catch basins with special briquettes, long season briquettes, throw them in catch basins that hold water. The mosquitoes that transmit West Nile love to breed in the nastiest water you can think of.
Basin drain?
Yeah, like your roadside drain. Yeah. So it holds water, breeds mosquitoes, mosquitoes transmit West Nile. We can go and treat those individual catch basins and bring numbers way down. We also have granulars. Some of them are specific bacteria that are related to, that interrupt the mid gut of the mosquito larvae that's dusted on some corn cob bits and kind of spread like chicken feed. All of our, most of our larbicides are, some of them are even organic listed, like the ones that I throw in the catch basin, those are actually bomb relisted. Everything is targeted, so it's not like the big broad base, you know, smokeable, I'll kill everything kind of thing when we do the larvicide thing. We want to make sure that we're very targeted. When it comes time for the adult spraying, when we do have some sort of public health threat, we do have an ultra low volume sprayer, actually a couple of them that we go and we spray only the areas in which there have been positive, positive pools of West Nile or some other, in, in the event that there would be some other mosquito-borne disease outbreak. But again, those areas are target spraying where we don't have a broad use in space or just, you know, like some counties, every Tuesday the barber truck goes by, that's not something that I do. I don't think that that's a wise use of funds or a, a good impact on the environment.
Did they ever, I know me and Dr. Diana have discussed a warning system before you go spray because a lot of people don't like that to be out, have their kids out or animals out. Did you guys ever come up with any way?
Yep, that, that did go live at the beginning of last season. We, we have a form that anybody can fill out and, but don't ask for a name or anything, just ask for your contact information and an address. When we are going to be spraying in your area, we will send out a notification either to the email or text, however you choose, indicating that there will be spraying in your area that evening. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, one more question. So you mentioned hedge basin, which sounds like an artificial pool of water. Are you doing any treatment on natural pools of water?
Uh, yes, we do have a couple natural wetlands that do breed, some of them breed ungodly amounts of mosquitoes. So yes, we do treat some wetlands. We can't get all of them, but, but yes, we do. Wherever, wherever mosquitoes are breeding, I'll, I'll be there trying to take care of it.
Sounds like that might be a great, multi discussion to bring Mr. Brett and Brett into. Vector Control.
Three months.
Question. Are the radar box?
The nine floor, but they're also available at every St. Joe County Public Library. So first, we understand the county stadium isn't super accessible sometimes, so.
My library.
My library.
Thank you.
Six twenty-five. Ashley Alman, Director of Nursing, Health Department, ninth floor. I'm gonna share a little bit about the school liaison, which is what this funding is for, to give some context to the budget. So the school liaison role is a new role that went full-time last March. And over the course of the about last year, we launched many initiatives and were able to provide support to schools in. Some things that we did specifically were visiting school health professionals in person, conducting assessments, creating a method for schools to be able to request health-related supplies. A community partnership program was created and launched to connect community support to the school needs throughout the county. We held our first annual school health conference for all school health personnel and we were so successful in that conference that we were asked to present to other counties across the state regarding how we did it. We are hands-on in the school, participating in wellness committees, providing vaping education, Narcan training, completing vision screenings, hearing screenings and more. Since September first of this year, we've had over a hundred and thirty contacts, individual contacts from school health and administration personnel through email, phone calls or texts, asking questions, needing support, vaccine record translation, varicella cases, you know, how, how do they proceed? And we have been able to support that. We communicate monthly with every school in the county and we include live Zoom meetings so that we can answer questions real. So just so, that's just a little bit of context about the program. Looking at the budget, the, most of the, the items that are listed are personnel-related. However, there are a few things on there that I want to talk just a little bit more about. You see money listed there for the, for conferences. That is the funding to allow our school health conference to be held again this fall. Last year, we had an attendance of over forty-two school health personnel and our goal for twenty twenty-five is to increase that by fifty percent. That also covers the cost for the school liaison to get training in programs like Stop the Bleed, Stop the Bleed, CPR, Catch My Breath, et cetera, to be able to provide those in the community. There is a donations fund. I was here very recently talking to you about that Fair Foundation donation. It's just that same funding when Barb and John Fair heard about our community partnership program. They were very excited. They wanted to support school attendance and they wanted to make sure every school in the county had the opportunity to get five hundred dollars worth of what they needed for their students to get them out of the nurse's office and back into the classroom. And so we're just now spending that in this year. And then you'll see medical supplies listed. So we accept requests from schools for medical supplies. We have a team that, that consists of health officers, our administrator, Director of Nursing, our school health liaison. We review all requests, we assure the need and then we, I want to just state that we always try to find the best cost option if a need is agreed on and that we would like to fund it. We looked at what we spent over the last year and we forecast that out monthly to get the number for twenty twenty-five. And some examples of things that we bought last year, we bought testing equipment for school districts, so hearing machines, vision machines, blood pressure cuffs, glucometers, those types of things, durable equipment like transport chairs, nursing office cots, stethoscopes, emergency supplies, AEDs are requested very frequently and Stop the Bleed kits, those types of emergency supplies and then single-use items, things like land sets, glucose test strips and ketone test strips. Some of this you guys are familiar with, some of it may be new. I'm happy to talk in more detail about any of it and answer any questions you may have.
You said five hundred dollars for each school to get kids out of the nurse's office and back into the classroom. I'm just curious, what are you doing to get kids out of the nurse's office?
Great question. So when we went out last March and started visiting schools, we asked, what, what do you need? What are your, your health needs? What are you seeing with your students? We thought we were going to be able to kind of meet these big goals, work on diabetes, obesity, you know, asthma, and what we heard from the schools was, I need underwear because Johnny, who's here, has been sitting in this office for two hours because I don't have any underwear. This school health person has purchased them, ran through their supply and now it's March of last year. And so the child is sitting in the office while they are waiting a parent to return a call to get transportation, to get that supply to school. So typically it's clothing items, mostly there's some food items that were requested for children with type one diabetes to help regulate their blood sugar in longer term. So a little bit more protein-type items and a few hygiene items.
You possess for, let me ask a question. Why, why the school eat keto strips?
Keto and test strips?
Yeah, for ketosis.
Yes, so yes.
So the school would test for that?
Yeah, so if they have a diabetic student, they might test their urine for ketones.
A school, a school nurse would, or a school, they'd have to be a nurse to do that test?
So the particular school that we supplied that to, it was a registered nurse. You.
Or doing diabetic testing.
Yes, so there is a lot more here. There's higher and these children who are in schools and so we're seeing a lot more care, not just diabetes, but you know, kids with G-tube, G-tube, like all kinds of things that, you know, they're all in school together, which is fantastic, but it does lead to a little bit more work for the nurses and it's, that's why we advocate for having an RN in the building because these kind of things.
And these are going, these funds are going to private and public schools?
All schools in St. Joe County, all one hundred schools. We have reached out to any school that we haven't had a contact back from multiple times and we've been able to get in contact with all but one. And so we are working on that last one. But yes, we want to make sure all schools know that the funds are available and that the support, if they have questions or concerns, if they want training, anything like that, it's available to every school.
Thank you.
So you mentioned a hundred schools, St. Joe County. I don't know if you'd already mentioned this, but how many of the schools retain an onsite school nurse?
So it's changing.
And you just need to estimate that's, that's fine.
Um, I can tell you, most of the private schools do not, are the, the same, the diocese schools do not have a nurse onsite. There are three nurses, one very part-time and two full-time who support all of the schools in the four-way diocese. N and Mishawaka schools have RNs in the building. For South Bend, it is RNs definitely in the high schools. Otherwise, there are, again, nurses that are supervising multiple schools. It's a hard job. They don't get a lot of pay and so it's, it's hard to fill those roles sometimes. Seven twenty-five, bill number seven twenty-five, salary amendment.
Well, not avoiding, Director of Care, second floor, law building. We'd like to appropriate the funds left in the statewide initiative to cover four of our community health worker salaries that focus on lab poisoning and prevention in St. Joe County after this balance is used, the HFI will cover their salaries after that.
When do you expect these to?
So as I understand it, that this should cover the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Land use planning committee, Mr. Tenzler, bill number one dash twenty-five and ordinance establishing rules regarding off-road vehicles, Fisher, Joe Thomas. Um, last year, this, uh, snowmobile club, five ATV club came to the council and asked us to look at the ordinance, so it would be, uh, St. Joe County would approve, uh, off-road vehicles, snowmobiles, et cetera. It's right in front of there. I don't need anything else on the ordinance, I think. Jen, Jen, do you have any more copies of the ordinance? Does everybody, we have the ordinance in? So they came to us to see if it'd be okay if they could do in this county, all the surrounding counties around St. Joe County has an ordinance just like this. And, uh, of course, the Michigan can do it also, but, uh, very few counties that do not have an ordinance like this. Um, I've, uh, I've talked to, uh, attorney, of course, and I've talked to Jake and their fellow club members, they can explain it better than I can. Um, so I think I'll let Jake Narcovitz, I think he's your president, are you the president of the club? It's our, okay, I'll let Mr. Narcovitz here, uh, describe in better in detail for us.
Yeah, if I could pass this around, maybe this is kind of all the green, are all the counties that have approved the ordinances and the checkered red are the counties that have not. And then the yellow ones, those are just for, uh, farm use only. Um, so basically, we would like to be able to ride our machines on the county roads. We wanna try to create economy for the economy for the county. Um, we would like to, uh, plan rides. Uh, we recently did one in Elkar County and it was very successful. Um, we brought in a lot of people from Ohio, from Michigan, from Illinois. They came, brought their machines, they wanted the ride. Um, we do work on the snowmobile trail every year, so we use side-by-sides and AP, ATVs to put in that trail. We do use the county roads for that, so we would like to make it legal for us to be able to put in and take out the trail legally. I mean, I believe what you have written up here is, uh, great. Um, there's maybe a few things that kind of need tweaked a little bit. Um, we were, had a question about, uh, seventy-five, code seventy-five eleven about that ordinance. I wasn't quite sure if that meant count, uh, smaller towns like Walkerton or North Liberty would be allowed to make their own ordinances to where they wanted to allow a side-by-side to come in to get fuel, to get food. They could have a separate ordinance. Ocean recently did that, Whistled did that, uh, Middlebury did that. So Elkar County kinda set the base and then allows other, uh, township, I would say, to, you know, make their own rules and regulations, their own ordinances. So I just wanna make sure, I wasn't quite sure the understanding of that there. So are you having any question? Yeah, I wasn't sure what that meant by, when you, we guys have it worded, is that basically saying you're not gonna allow the other towns to create their ord- ordinances or not?
Well, it's county-wide. Maybe Mr. Zales, could you tell us exactly, how would that apply to the incorporated areas of county?
The county-wide ordinance under sort of apply to be in Texas. Randy, are you doing, I'm sorry, Randy, are you helping with this?
So, yeah. So the way that I wrote it was essentially, I took a lot of it from copying other, other counties ordinances. This section probably came from Brown County. I used a lot of theirs. And the way that it is currently written, it only applies to the unincorporated areas of the county and the county's roads. Within a town, if they wanted to allow it, they would have to pass their own.
The towns and cities are exempted. This is for unincorporated St. Joe County.
Just for unincorporated St. Joe County.
And, and if I may put a finer point on that, I think you said unincorporated county roads?
There's, uh, the, the, your control does not extend to allowing it on state roads.
And that's my intent, is I didn't think like state road two.
You can allow them to cross the state road if they're staying on a county highway and that's about the extent of what you're allowed to do with the state road.
So if you're in Granger on one side of twenty-three and you wanna cross, you're allowed to do that, but you can't go down twenty-three.
Yes.
Oh, I, I would put it for you, Brandon. Is Lakeville, they have anything like this? Do you know?
If they, I don't, I don't remember seeing it in their code, but they do allow golf carts, but I don't play ATVs. Those are totally, if, those are governed by different stats.
Get through that, it's not part of this.
It is not golf cart. Yeah, I don't play, I don't play Lakeville.
You have a question? Been going ahead and ask you, since you wrote this, um, I think that eighteen years old is that, I think that's good, that, you know, you're honoring kids to have a couple of years of experience. Vehicles, is that the other counties around us similar?
I, there was nothing that I just came up with out of my head. It came from some other counties or possibly it's, looked at it.
And seventy-five point zero five, St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners may restrict an off-road vehicle on any county highway by designating such county highway as unsuitable for off-road vehicle traffic by posting signs on such designated roads. I think that's really important and I question whether or not and make this, you know, if we, let's say we were to pass this in February, um, section seventy-five eleven, section three says effective immediately upon its passage. That's not gonna give our commissioners, county metters, uh, time to decide which roads and get signage up. Um, so looking at those two, I'm wondering if maybe we need to have, you know, I don't wanna cost you guys your winter season, but maybe a, a few months before this goes into effect where county highway department to get out there, evaluate roads and decide which roads get those signs. Would that be a separate effort from what we're reviewing now? I think it would have to be written in here because it says, uh, that this would become law immediately in
Yeah.
Section three of seventy-five eleven.
But the, the commissioners may restrict, uh, any roads by, you know, if they determine unsuitable by posting signs, so they could do that going forward and into what we're doing.
Could, but we would.
The thriving on those roads.
For safety, correct, we wanted that, we're gonna get it done before the eighteen-year-olds on smoking. On whatever. So that's just something that I would add, I would you know, amend it possibly. To make improvements, of course, six months from passing it or three months, whatever, whatever Mr. Metters thinks. Yeah.
The roads that he doesn't want to go in and put it in there.
Yeah. Probably talk to him. Probably, yeah, but it's, it'd be the county engineer that has him.
Okay, Ben.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Dan, I'm right, uh, I live in Ocean, sorry. Trying to get over here though, actually, but I just I have a grandson being born and, and beginning of March and grandma wants to be in St. Joe County, down on, down on Roseville. So if anybody's got any property in Roseville, please let me know. See me, I need, I, I need to build a retirement home. Um, uh, anyways, uh, so I worked with the Elkar County Commissioners on this and then also, uh, Ocean and city levels. Uh, but it, uh, we don't have that in the Elkar where you, you need to go out and individually look at a reasonable road. Um, it was just based on whether it was a county, uh, maintained road or a state road. Uh, we are not allowed on any state roads whatsoever. Uh, we can cross them at ninety degrees only, uh, which at times is a little difficult because you might have to down to a couple of county roads to get across safely because not all county roads cross a state road and be able to continue on. Uh, but, uh, the way the Elkar County one is writ, um, it just clearly, we just cannot be on state road. So it might make that a lot easier if you just adopt their same version. Um, and that way you don't have to send somebody else out, uh, no extra costs. Yeah, and it's very well self-policed, I have to say, for I'm, I'm super happy with it. I followed up with, uh, Officer Siegel, Sheriff Siegel months and months afterwards, just to try to, hey, are we behaving? Are you having any issues or? He says, it, uh, honestly, he said, I wasn't sure at first, but unbelievably well. Incidences or any issues, so. And then obviously, the, the cities that did adopt it, uh, they're thrilled, that, as Jake had mentioned. Uh, obviously, we're not gonna come in and help bend or anything to postpone unincorporated cities. Um, we would, they would definitely love to have.
Can you tell us about your, uh, functions you have? And you were telling about how many people come and come to, come to the county and spend their dollars here in other counties, of course?
Yeah, so, uh, one of the big, big things that, uh, is once Elkar passed, uh, I went around to all the cities like Ocean, you know, small, pretty, pretty big, Ocean, uh, Middlebury, Bristol. Um, and offered them the opportunity to be able to have us come in and spend money at your gas station. There's nothing worse than having to go get a gas can, run it into town, run it back, build their machine and then even go on a ride. Why wouldn't it be better to load up my family, my kids, come around and get ice cream, get tacos and get gas all in your community? Um, so we started attending a bunch of rides in Michigan where they're group rides, which I realize how繁复的 parks these were. Uh, not everybody can afford to go all the way to the UP every weekend. It's expensive, already go up to trails or whatnot. So road riding has become very popular with side-by-sides. And if you guys are all familiar with side, what a side-by-side is, but like a miniature Jeep, it's huge, it's as big as a Jeep. Um, uh, so those rides were quite large in Michigan, so we offered the same opportunity for Middlebury, Bristol and Ocean. I mean, we organized this ride. Um, it was honestly, the goal is to have these activities on a Saturday and go out and celebrate this passage. We had, uh, two hundred people, eighty-seven.
Hundred.
Forty-seven machines show up and spent thousands, thousands, thousands of dollars. And what we did is we made it, uh, so that way, uh, we, we wanted to spend money in towns, so we had stops all along the way in, in business, local businesses. Uh, the only way to get raffle tickets for prizes at night is to show me a receipt that you spent money at that facility. The money that, at that store or restaurant or gas station. Um, you had a lot of popcorn, a lot of Chihuana, something like that.
All of them are pop shops, yeah.
Um, uh, they got raffle tickets. It was amazing. We had it at, at us a house. Looking down the tables of all the people that had spent the fifteen and twenty receipts for the raffle ticket that night. So I know that it was a gigantic influx of money in a lot of those small mama pop shops, so. I did purposely go around and follow up afterwards just to make sure that they were happy with it. There was difficulties. Uh, and every single one I talked to, business owner, begged us, if you ever do this again, please have me. Because that was the busiest Saturday and that was the most cash till that we've done on a Saturday ever in our store. Thank you, thank you. Can you please, you know, continue with that, so? Anyways, uh, but if, yeah, if you have any other questions, yeah, but, but we would definitely would, would rather just to be, stay off state roads, so that way we don't cost county any extra, extra effort, you know, for the signs. Self-reckoning. Uh, but one thing I would, I would quickly mention, uh, there's to help define yourself a little bit, make it a little bit easier, uh, would be on definitions, uh, seventy-five oh one, page. Uh, actually, page two. So the recreational off-road vehicle. Uh, the, the easiest way to define that is just to use the Indiana code, state code, which would be fourteen dash eight, two dash thirty-five. Can you change that, Brandon?
We've been talking about.
No, that's okay. Yeah. Yeah, and that, that protects you guys, so that way, there's always, it just refers back to the state and, and that way there's, there's no confusion on what we have listed here. Uh, like E and B, those are actually some kind of old statutes and those wouldn't apply anymore. It would be safer just to use the Indiana state code, uh, there. That way, that way there's no chance of mis, misrepresentation for the public and then you guys aren't getting one either. Hey, this says this, but, uh, what's the state code say? And the state code is, is slightly different. Um, and I think that was, uh, the other one that I would, I would probably refer to you is, uh, seventy-five dash zero seven. Second to the last page. And then, and then subset D. Where it says eighteen years of age who is riding on and off, off-road vehicles, don't wear a helmet. I would, I would add in accordance of state, state code nine dash eighteen point one, dash fourteen, dash eleven. And that's the state code for all youth or adults or anybody, and it covers, the way it covers city itself, or the, the county of St. Joe. Use the, the state code instead of self-interfering situations. Thank you very much for, happy to see you, we really appreciate it. Yeah, appreciate it.
I'm glad, can we make those changes on the, I'm sorry, can we make those changes, we just said? How should we proceed? The author, or can Brandy do it? I don't know.
We can stay with the author. The author can send it to me in an editable format and I can make the changes that you don't get.
She sent it to you?
Sure.
Was that the plan?
Need his contact info, but I can do it.
How many changes are there?
Just what they were.
Oh, you do those, those two?
Yeah.
You suggest?
For the most part, I think it's very well written. I think you guys did a, a really good job and, and, and it really, uh, here's other county, it's exactly what they're doing, so.
Well, I, I like taking it to Indiana code because now you can change one source and then it potentially can affect all of these green counties simultaneously instead of individual effort on all these green counties on top of changing the.
Yeah, we've seen, we, we've seen that up in Michigan and Michigan's different area, obviously. But some counties want to have their own set of subset rules and there's a lot of confusion public and they, they can't participate. Because they're right on a county line, but they can't go over to Zimmy's because they have a different set of rules than this county or this county that's, it, it makes it very confusing. So the goal was with the Elkar one is that, uh, we just kinda reflect what's around us so that way people can go across county lines and not be concerned that you're, you're not following the same rules.
Like to propose something to Mr. Zales, um, the seventy-five oh nine has five hundred dollars per violation. You know, I see two, there's potentially, I mean, these vehicles, so I just think like this is, is five hundred reasonable per violation? Kind of an open-headed question.
Teenagers aren't supposed to be operating.
Well, I'd be giving.
I suppose.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm plastifying those adults, but yes, they are still.
Yeah. I mean, and I'm sure there's other room for forgiveness, I just not really sure how the violations are, are for, this is a fairly minor, I mean, moving violation, beating ticket.
I think part of the point is you don't want sixteen, seventeen-year-olds on them because they make bad decisions. Trust me.
Well, that's, that's fair, yeah.
So, um, you know, that would, that would, parents would be, they see five hundred dollar fine. No, Johnny, you're not taking the snowmobile out on the road. You're not eighteen. I think that's, I think we need some kind of determines.
Yeah.
What's your question?
So my question is just, you know, is five hundred per violation reasonable? Uh, is that pegged to what the county does for similar violation?
That's, that's just, I guess, I used a lot of brown counties, so if I had to, yes.
Section in terms of ORV violations in the state of Indiana. They're scaled based upon the nature of the offense according to various levels of misdemeanor. This appears to be just a blanket fine for a violation of this particular ordinance. So if you wanted it scaled, you may be able to scale it according to the type of violation.
Yeah. Which, you know, that would add complexities, I don't know that.
But this is primarily dealing with snowmobiles, right? I mean, so we're, it's, it's.
And go-karts.
You guys are. Side-by-side is like a mini Jeep.
If it's a registered machine, they have to be registered to the state of Indiana, so there's, there are registration fees and everything you have to go through. You have to share your credentials to the BMV before you can register it, so. In, insurance is very important because you're gonna be on the road, you should be insured and most of us are fully insured, you know? Um, I mean, they're twenty, thirty thousand dollar machines. Most of the, the owners of the machines, they're not putting their child on there. They're not sending their fifteen, sixteen-year-old kid out. I'm saying that it won't happen, but most likely it's more or less responsible adults that have these machines that can afford it.
Seem to be a lot of redundancy with state code on ORV vehicles that are just in recontinuing a local level on the form of an ordinance. And what's the reason for that? If we already have a state law that speaks to the issue, why do you need a county law that speaks yet again to the very same? Why do you need a county law that speaks yet again, the very same issue? As opposed to, you know, just what are we talking about in terms of? The specifics of the request, if it's just for snowmobiles. So that they can travel on roadways. You know, we have an ordinance that, as I read it, recodifies a lot of our laws at the local level. We already have it state. No, just for O R V vehicles. For registration requirements and.
Yeah, we.
Put it in nasal ordinance, simpler rather than recodifying the state law. Oh, that was my question when I read it and looked through it was it seemed like. It was a regurgitation of a lot of existing laws and the takeaway was, okay, what are we enacting? As a local body. That's going to give maybe more protection to the state law. Or are we carving out a specific exception for, you know, snowmobiles because of what they can do for the local economy? That was a general takeaway. So, you know, I'm not sure where that fits in all of this, but there was some redundancy.
More like a policing issue. So it gives you a way to enforce what we're doing, I guess you could say. So you have. Some sort of outline to say, okay, you can't do this, you can't do that. You get pulled over and you don't have it registered. Now you're getting your five hundred dollar fine. You're going to make sure you're going to register to have a date next time. But uh. I mean, other counties have passed the ordinances, so I guess I didn't realize that. You know, I I just felt that uh, like a farmer should be able to go down the road and check his crop on his side by side. And not have to worry about if he's breaking the law or not. So if there's an ordinance passed that says it's okay for him to do that, then he's able to do it. So. Statless, just so that's for us, it's, you know, the community members, you know, farmers, they they. Use A T Vs and side by sides to check their crops and whatnot. So it'll be for them too.
Are you saying the state already allows them to do all these things?
Well, the state has various rules in terms of registration of your four wheeler. And insurance and financial responsibility for your four and penalties in the event that you. I'm on the roadway, driving around Elbel Golf Course on a public road. On my four wheeler that's not registered. I don't have proof of financial responsibility. And a county police officer pulls me over, he can write me a ticket. Based upon existing state law, he doesn't need this ordinance in order to do so. To Mr. Rutten's point, though, now that we're kind of talking it through a little bit. In terms of the penalty and the violation, we'll want to make sure that a violation of this ordinance. With a five hundred dollar penalty. Doesn't uh, tread on some state. Uh, laws in terms of, I told you they were scaled, something's an A misdemeanor, something may be a C misdemeanor and factors infractions. So we want to make sure that we're we're careful and we don't tread. Um, on some existing state law. That would probably be something I'd like to bring back to you in terms of the penalties so you can make them. But I do agree with adding, if we're going to do so, the um, code definitions. That were discussed. In terms of Indiana's helmet law.
Thomas, if you had any raffle list, added raffle, did you work with the sheriff or?
No, we looked at other counties. Right, Randy, and we all did. We did, we looked at the other counties and basically.
I mean, I see, I love. He's doing here. Detective Officer Noonan, are you available to comment? Have you guys heard about this? Offroad vehicle ordinance and guys. Your position might be on this. Can you hear me, Steve?
They needed.
So given what I've heard tonight, I mean, this is just my opinion as the chair. I mean. Um, I think Mr. Rutten brought up some valuable points about. Scaling the rivalry. Uh, I I had a question. Are we, if the ordinance passed with this, the county indemnified, are we indemnified by? By any, if it happens enabling the ordinance, are we indemnified from liability should somebody get injured or shit? In terms of, does this open us up to more liability, I guess?
It would. The state essentially set passed the the fourteen sixteen, I want to say fourteen sixteen one. They says if you want to allow this, you you can do so by passing an ordinance. I mean, I'm not sure who would I, who would indemnify you, but I'm also not sure. How you would be considered to be liable in the first place.
So I saw, I mean, then maybe they're not weighing in yet. We we put keeping committee, you think, if these things worked out, the definitions.
Yeah, what's the procedure on that? So we keep in committee, what do we do then? Uh, I mean, I'm just.
That work just to get these things worked out so we can have no one that's.
Still be sitting here in February committees.
Then the Florida March, move it moment, the March call. I I I did, I think your idea was good too, the fact that maybe we should pass it, but have it. Skies. A period of time to give the counties time to catch up with signs they wanted. Maybe give some doctor, if you can, if you're better, if you can mount them to say. Hey, would you guys want to put some signs over? Do you want, would it affect immediately? Let's find some time to get some signs up on certain roads you wouldn't want traveling because the safety of the road.
What's your experience with with this? Uh, uh, other counties? Is it, is uh, with the sheriff or with um? Signage.
You're really no different than a motorcycle.
I mean, you could really get in the weeds, bark on this, um, and it could get down to minutia. I'm just, I mean, they copied other county ordinances. Pretty staple, you know.
Major Noonan's trying to talk to us, I thought he had his hand up. There, Major Noonan? Yes, your council.
Yeah, Mr. Thomas, I want to, I think this is a great idea. I want to see this get done, but also agreed it. Hey, let's just hold it for a month. Let's get these things worked out. So when we get it to committee, we don't have to throw a whole bunch. No, we don't have a bunch of amendments getting thrown at it. I think that's. The big prudent. So who are we working out? Who are we working this out with? And the county engineer and the sheriff?
I think that would be good.
And and you'll look, you'll, you're gonna have to.
Say, for instance, the definitions that are on page one of the ordinance, they mirror the Bureau of Vehicle. Right on their website. Multiwheel vehicle, a low pressure tire vehicle, amphibious vehicle, a ground effect air cushion vehicle, does not include a golf cart.
Mr. Noonan's telling me he cannot.
Like that is.
Mr. Thomas, your ordinance, um. Just to clean it up.
Yeah, uh, uh, that's fine.
I I I it's a good idea too. When I guys came. Glad you moved forward with it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So. What exactly are you asking for that? You don't think is allowed now?
So we, we are not allowed to be any, on any, on, or any, any of your county roads. In the county at all.
That's, that's the one thing we need. So it sounds like we could streamline the audience of the ordinance. But there is something we need.
Yeah, yeah, so. Over and visit my son on the Roosevelt Road and I. Right, as soon as I hit the end of Elkhart County, I have to stop. I have to turn around and come back. Even though it would be on a county road and they can sneak over safely that they. See now. We're still not allowing. The enabling of state code fourteen or sixteen. Says that we have the authority to regulate the operation of broke vehicles in the county. That does any of the. Specifies accessory or. Or as a vehicle operator, the driver's license. And imposes a driver organization less than ten thousand. So like, there are four or four things that have to be. Included in that. Rather than necessarily, I mean, to Mr. Zales's point, for it to go. Multiple pages deep. The identifying this. I think it's. Great to have all of us build a better understanding because I don't think any of us really understood. It's a take to have an off road ordinance before this was brought before us and you guys spoke to the desire. Uh, uh, in previous uh, privilege of the board when you came as group. Uh, but I think as we drive into it, um, what other counties has done is probably valid to compare to, but we may not. Need to specify to that level of detail. We're just regurgitating Indiana code.
What I'd like to send to you. Starting point, which is what is the prohibition keeps snowmobile off of county roadway? And then. Build from that. Something that gives permission and according to what's being asked for. So that then we, we have it as narrow as possible. I think that the, the smaller is better, the simpler is better.
Yeah, we.
That agreeable? I would create a motion to the committee. Someone.
I'll make that motion.
It's been a motion a second, you go one dash twenty five. One twenty five. Although I just, um, sure. Second boss, but he said they have not had a chance of the M N org, it's what would like to meet with you, Randy, or the group.
I'll definitely give it a thought tomorrow.
Something to, something to keep in mind also, we do have online on uh. Involvement, so if if it's hard for you to get back here for successive meetings. That's an alternative that you could still participate.
Thank you. Yeah, send it to me.
Right, um, we're going to go then to uh, budget administration committee again, Mr. Tanner.
Sure. That is. Holding committee, uh, bill number fifty nine, that's coming for taxpayer protection and transparency bill. The petitioners named Drake, that's more. Um, I'm actually going to. Um, this was first filed. On May thirtieth, it was the first reading, June eleventh. It did not appear on the June, July, August or September committee meetings. Uh, it did appear again on October, uh, committee meeting, but uh, it was skipped over. By the chair of the meeting. Didn't appear again on November. It did appear again in December, uh, but without a folk was uh, identified as being held in committee. Um, according to council rules, section nine C and G. This actually needs to be withdrawn and defined. Um, specifically, the committee of action shall not hold said proposed ordinance in committee for more than sixty days. At which time said proposed ordinance must receive final action by the council or be withdrawn from the council consideration.
That you're understanding? That's what I was told. Before, I mean, I, I, I did not.
I don't think there, there was a time limitation. Whether it's sixty days or, I don't think that you're.
So, section nine G, I, I read that as.
So everything is probably. I guess we all learned something.
And then it goes away.
It it can be refiled on. I think it's withdrawn by council rules on, but uh. Unless somebody feels that they should be for a vote. That we need a, a vote on something that's withdrawn.
Section G says, if a proposed ordinance has been told in committee twelve months or more. The presiding officer of the council or sponsor may place such proposed ordinance on the agenda of the council for action. But no such action returned. Ordinance. Back the committee, the committee shall not hold said proposed ordinance in committee more than sixty days. At which time said proposed ordinance must receive final action by the council. So what happened back then? Reading and and.
It was our first reading and referred to the committee.
Well, your reading says.
You say twelve months?
It says, if a proposed ordinance has been held in committee. For twelve months or more, the providing officer of the council may place such proposed ordinance. On the agenda of the council for action.
What are you reading then, Brian?
I was reading a portion of that. That I have happened to copy.
But did this go to public hearing?
No. Sounded right, Brian.
Okay. It's sitting in here since May, still within the twelve months here.
I know the rules better than you.
I don't have them memorized. I just. Um, to that extent, was the request by a petitioner to hold it in. Uh, there's a motion to hold it in committee, uh, for one more month, is there a second? All was in favor. I.
Very good. Nothing from the rules. I'd like to see us get a chance. I mean, we've got. It's six people.
You have them in front of you.
So it'd be nice to get to interview those people. Who's hitting it? Uh, Tim Cotton. Dan Caruso. Steve Downing. Robert Presuncy Jr. Gary Fox. Dustin Brown. And I think Steve Forman was going to be a Steve Forman. And Leroy Sanchez. The read of all the commission has held up some of the meetings. Get on it pretty good, we can. Steve Downing.
So all these people are applying. Yes, how many?
They get made every year annually.
Public notice was sent out with five being today being cut off, these letters of interest.
Five positions, we have two of those. We have a good one every year in December. So we're going to be here or every other year, every year.
Standing, uh, just like we don't have to interview for other appointments. Uh, but it has been, um, courtesy of petition in the last several years. Um.
It's a volunteer position too, I cannot. Should at least in the courtesy, people are volunteering. That's a very important.
And what position have we taken on interviews? Can you all meet with the person or? Even it must be public.
And we have a little bit of legal controversy in that last year. Or year before, year before.
Would next Tuesday at five thirty work for, for many folks?
It's Tuesday night to Wednesday.
Okay, so. Thursday.
So like, how are you going to do this? We're going to get them, and many of theirs box them on that day or what?
Time you're going to give each?
The sixth? What time?
But what's worthy? It's not a meeting that we're taking a photo on. You don't have to have a court. But it would be nice to have as much participation as.
I can get here as soon as possible and. We start at five thirty. Get here as soon as I can. Thank you, everybody else is great. Think you're in on the others. I don't want if everybody else is ready.
I'll let you with five thirty. I mean, you were coming in just a little bit later.
I mean, I'll get here as soon as I can. My.
Six.
About the six, I might be basic. I get I'm coming from Niles, but I might be able to have. I still might be able to get out of there at thirty and be there by six.
Yeah.
Probably will be a little later. Some of those people can't make it. Well. I mean, you may have ordered two that can't make it. You can ask them to be flexible about the time slots that were scheduled or be uh. Flexible with others who have time restrictions that. They have the option of the same caller for interview.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but I can zoom whenever I want. You really are listening. I mean. Yeah, I'm not.
Yeah. First in this picture. Jane, can you notify all eight?
I will be chatting on tomorrow and find out their availability as well. Uh we'll get with the attorney over public notice. Uh do you want to have it here or out there? And then is everybody going to be listening to everybody's stuff? So they're all going to be sitting along the wall while you're interviewing or? What do you want them to do?
I think here makes the most sense. I think as we can reserve some individual interviews.
Okay, so then I'll wait out there and then one's done, the next one comes in.
I have it here.
They'll sit out there like we did.
It's not really. Boy, it is. Department.
Six.
Six. Six on the six.
Eat before you come.
Any other business comes to six to five.
Let's be all right there.
You have the one we come over every day.
You know.
He's paying for job interviews, an hour and a half. You need paid for job interviews?
I think you have to be here. But anyway, notice we are purely projected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Write a notice.
We need to make sure our notices proper. Media for advertising. That's something we need to make sure that.
These guys are free.
And make sure the security is scheduled so that it is truly over the door.
True. We have one time when people could get them down.
Yeah, the spanning meeting.
That's right.
So his chance for any. So they can each.
With everybody being do that once. Everybody for that's the one.
Away. You need like a set two or three questions, fifteen minutes is that much time for somebody that's going to say they are. Why they're interested. What their goals are. It's everybody in the same question. Playish pianos.
All rules anyway. Yeah, just boilerplate it better. At least the baseline.
Right.
Seventy five.
Mr. Vaz just.
Should. Or was that even you need to be consistently. That I know.
Well, then make sure that. I like the question you're asking. Yeah. One or.
Yeah.
I think you need one last. Or two. Actually, Chanty made four. Count the Zoom meetings then. Okay.
I'm gonna get a hold of the schedule like so they know what the schedule looks like. Do they meet once a month?
Definitely they.
Maybe I can get a hold of the whole schedule.
They were moving third. Tuesday of the month so they could get away from the commissioners. Dialing in the third Tuesday.
Second, fourth, there.
But I think the third is their evening. Confirm that.
All right.